Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Blanco.
Here.
Commissioner Lopez.
Here.
Commissioner Dickerson.
Here.
Commissioner Mohajer.
Here.
Chair Seifer.
Here. Thank you. We need to have an approval of the Planning Commission minutes of the last meeting. Do I hear a motion? And we have a second. All in favor? Someone else?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? One abstention.
Yep.
Yes. Okay. Perfect. At this time, we're going to open it up for the public comment period. Each member of the audience may address the commission on any subject within the commission's business that is not on the agenda. Each member of the audience and each subject is limited to the discussion of three minutes or as otherwise directed by the chair. Do we have anyone speak on anything that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, we're going to move on.
Chair Seifer, I would like to say something.
Yeah, that's right. We have Zoom. We have to open it up for the Zoom people. Tracy, how are we doing on Zoom?
We have none in attendance, but I'd still like to say.
Thank you for catching me on that. I have it written down and everything, so thank you.
If you are participating via Zoom and wish to make a public comment, please use the raised hand button in the Zoom meeting portal. If you are using a phone, press star nine on your telephone keypad, then press star six to unmute your phone. When it is your time to speak, you will be requested to unmute your microphone and speak for the time allotted by the chair. Your microphone will be muted upon completion of your comments unless otherwise directed by the chair. Speakers will have three minutes to comment.
Nobody? Okay. Let's move on. We're going to go to item number 5A, Nutrient Ag Solutions Plan Development Permit at the 1300 block, West Main Street. Can we hear from staff, please?
Thank you, Chair Seifer, and good evening, commissioners. I am Greg Vine, Associate Planner with the city. Today, our will be presenting a plant development permit for Nutrient Ag Solutions to construct a truck repair and driver support facility and to establish outdoor storage at the 1300 block of West Main. This proposal was brought before the commission on July 20th, 2023, at a public study session, and setbacks landscaping, fencing, and the outdoor storage was discussed. I provided additional information regarding these discussions throughout their presentation. The 4.42 acre project site is located at the western portion of the city, just west of the intersection of West Main Street and Blosser Road, and this is within the West Main specific plan area. The site is located at the northwest corner of West Main Street and Kathleen Court, a private road. It is Zone PDCM, Planned Development Commercial Manufacturing, and is surrounded by property zone CM to the north, east, and west, to the south of property zone PDM1. Further east are property zone PDC2, which are developed with retail and commercial businesses. As I mentioned previously, the site is located within the West Main specific plan, and after a thorough review, it was determined that the project does conform with the requirements of the specific plan for the CM zone. Nutrient Ag Solutions owns both the project site and the adjacent property to the west where a majority of the business operations occur. Nutrient Ag provides fertilizer products and soil supplements to support local farming operations. The western parcel is developed with five buildings and several storage tanks, and access to the site is monitored by a man security shack as required for state licensing. It is the intent for this main access point to remain as the controlled point of access for both parcels. The eastern parcel, highlighted in yellow, is currently used for the informal outdoor storage of trucks and equipment that support the existing business operations. There have been no discretionary approvals for the subject site. This application only applies to the eastern property and does not include the existing Nutrient Ag facility in Redler. This is the street view taken from West Main Street looking northwest. The site is surrounded by an existing six-foot-tall screened fence topped with barbed wire and extends to the property line limits along West Main Street about four feet behind the sidewalk. The 6,700-square-foot Truck Repair and Driver Support Facility will be located at the northwestern corner of the subject parcel. This building comes as a need to support the existing operations of the Nutrient Ag facility to the west and their associated equipment. Currently, Nutrient Ag leases another building within city limits for the purpose of truck repair and service. And with this proposal, they would centralize their operations adjacent to the main facility. Both the proposed building and the outdoor storage areas will be accessed, as mentioned prior, by the adjacent property. Twenty-six parking spaces have been provided for the building, and 20 spaces are required. Outdoor storage will occur on the eastern side of the property. Staff has included a condition of approval for the outdoor storage areas that no materials shall be stored greater than the height of the required screen fencing. If any vehicles, trucks, trailers, or equipment are to be greater than six feet in height, those items shall be stored no closer than 60 feet to the West Main Street perimeter fencing. Additionally, the outdoor storage areas shall be limited and contained to the area on the project site plan and shall not be permitted within the front yard or front yard setback area. Also planned is a new retention basin at the southern half of the project site. The permit includes a condition of approval for the basin area that no outdoor storage, driving, or parking of vehicles shall occur within the basin area to prevent compaction of soils and retain the integrity of the basin area. This area shall be permanently protected by means of chain and bollards, fencing, or similar. The existing site fencing will be relocated both along West Main Street and Kathleen Court to conform with requirements of the City Municipal Code and the West Main specific plan. A 15-foot landscape setback will be provided along West Main Street, and a 10-foot landscape setback will be provided along Kathleen Court. Fencing will be relocated 19 feet behind the existing sidewalk along West Main and 16 feet behind the curb along Kathleen Court. The fencing is conditioned to be replaced or repaired to like-new condition as necessary, to also include the privacy flats and the barbed wire. Additionally, the applicant proposes a new six-foot sidewalk along the unimproved Kathleen Court. Both frontages will be fully landscaped, and a street tree easement will be included along West Main Street. The proposed Truck Repair and Driver Support Facility will be a metal-constructed building with a maximum height of just under 27 feet, which conforms to Municipal Code and specific plan standards. The applicant proposes white roofing materials, light stone walls, and dark brown roofing accents, doors, and trim, which is consistent with the architecture of the existing structures on the adjacent parcel. The building will include four service bays totaling approximately 2,860 square feet, and the remaining 3,840 square feet will be for the driver support area. That will include office spaces, a break room, restrooms, and showers. The majority of the irrigated landscape is proposed to be located in 19-foot-wide frontage along West Main Street and within the 16-foot frontage along Kathleen Court. The widened frontages and fence relocation will allow these street frontages to be fully landscaped, enhancing the appearance of this location and providing additional screening of the outdoor storage areas. Limited areas surrounding the new building and parking areas will also be landscaped to achieve the 7% landscape coverage that is proposed. The project will provide no landscaping within the outdoor storage areas where it will be difficult to maintain in a healthy condition due to the storage and movement of tractors, trailers, trucks, and other support vehicles. 15% landscape coverage is required by the City Municipal Code, and the applicant is requesting the Planning Commission approve a modification to reduce the landscape requirement for the reasons stated prior. A lotline adjustment is a required condition of approval as part of this permit. On the left, you will see the existing configuration of the two lots, and on the right is the proposed configuration. Purpose of the lotline adjustment is to allow for the connection of existing utilities running through the western parcel to connect to the new Truck Repair and Driver Support Building. This connection eliminates the need to run new utility lines through the eastern parcel. With the lotline adjustment, the applicant has requested a modification to condition of approval number 34 related to utility connections. Because the subject's storage parcel area will remain undeveloped following the lotline adjustment, staff has agreed to the removal of these requirements for new utility connections for the project site. This project qualifies as a Class 32 categorical exemption for infill development pursuant to Section 15332 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. Since the project site is less than five acres, it is substantially surrounded by urban uses, and it's consistent with the general plan on the West Main specific plan. The project will pose no significant effects on traffic, noise, air, and water quality. No further environmental review is required. This concludes staff's presentation. City staff recommends that the commission, by motion, approve Plan Development Permit PD 2023-0014 with the requested modifications of the previously mentioned conditions. We are available should you have any questions, and the applicant is also available should you have any questions for them.
Thank you, Greg. Do we have any expertise on this item? I did talk with Mr. Martinez about this particular project. Okay. Do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Dickerson?
Could you go over again what their reason is for justifying the more than 50% decrease in landscaping?
Yes. Go back to it. Chair Seifer, Commissioner Dickerson. So the... They maximized the frontage areas along West Main Street and Kathleen Court, and because the areas within the screened fencing will be used solely for outdoor storage, the... There is a concern that any landscaping within that area could not be maintained due to the outdoor storage of trucks and equipment, trailers, and such. And being that it's behind the screened fencing, I don't think it would achieve what that 15% requirement looks for.
How about the north side of the property? Who's on the north side there? I don't see any landscaping there, so I'm curious what that is.
I believe that just on the north side of the fencing, there is an existing drainage channel. And then I don't know if there's a basin area on that side, but that is a neighboring parcel.
And what is that? How's it zoned?
That is also zoned CM.
And in their new configuration, they want to bring the line north to south, basically right up from where that dog leg is. Is that correct? Yeah. So are they having to do landscaping on the existing? Or do they basically only have to do now landscaping on the, you know, the area that doesn't contain the building?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Dickerson. So the proposal for the landscape does have some small corridors of landscape surrounding the new building, and that new building will eventually, due to the lotline adjustment, be part of the existing western parcel. The majority, there's not much landscaping being proposed near the building. So the majority of the landscape will occur at the perimeters of the storage parcel along Kathleen Court and Main. Planning staff has found over the years that when landscaping is added to areas that are for storage, that landscaping does not last long. So to be realistic, we are getting the benefit of what landscaping they are proposing at the frontages, which is in conformance with the West Main specific plan. And staff supported the reduction request because, other than the storage area, there's really no other viable landscape areas on this project parcel.
Okay. Can you go back to where it shows the adjacent lot? Thank you. So why did you bother having them put landscaping on a portion of the northern section but not extend it all the way across?
Pardon me, Commissioner Dickerson. I'm not following your question.
See the northern area, the adjacent northern? If you go back to the landscaping, then you do have it, you do have some landscaping going from west to east on the northern side, but stopping at what I guess will be the point that they're going to shift. Why didn't you just have, I mean, if it needed to be on that portion, why didn't it need to be on the rest of it?
The portion that you're pointing out that is westernmost on the parcel in its current configuration is adjacent to the building, and it may be hard to read on the plan, but that is where the passenger car parking is adjacent to that corridor right there, that strip.
You're talking about the northern area?
Correct.
Okay.
Actually.
So it's for the benefit, basically, of the people who are parking there?
So this area here?
Yeah.
Yes, there's a row of parking stalls here. There's also a row of parking stalls on the south side. And then this is the office area of the building, so they've added a small strip of landscaping around that side.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Commissioner Blanco, thank you.
Okay, there. Greg, a question about the fence. You kept saying relocation of the fence along the perimeter roads. I mean, are we really talking about trying to relocate that fence? Or are they going to try to reconstruct the new fence? It's probably, it's pretty hard to relocate sometimes fencing, so I'm just curious if they really intend to do that or if they're going to rebuild the fence.
Chair Seifer, Commissioner Blanco. It is, my understanding, they are trying to relocate the fence and I believe we did include it as a condition that any fencing that needs to be repaired or replaced shall be replaced as like-new. As necessary, yeah.
And if I can just add to what Commissioner Dickerson was saying, I don't know, maybe I'm not totally clear, but the landscaping on the north side seems like there's a gap on the north corner of parcel two. Yeah, is that intended? I mean, is that an opportunity to meet the minimum 15% that we're missing? Or is there just, it's not viable there for some reason? Or it's, it looks like there's landscaping existing on the adjacent lot to the north. Is there any reason why we couldn't landscape that area?
It's my understanding that area will also be used for the outdoor storage.
That's also a storage area?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Mohajer, please.
I was just curious, understanding that this is going to be very truck, you know, traffic-heavy. What are other truck storages in the area? I know it's kind of, you know, the businesses like in nature that are adjacent to it, but do you have a number?
Yeah, that's not something I've dived into, Commissioner Mohajer. But looking at the...
I definitely see some over there.
Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Mohajer. You can see on the aerial, there are some areas where there's some storage yards. It's undetermined whether these are permitted or went through any kind of discretionary process. Just like this parcel that we're looking at here, we've gone through the past aerials, and you can see where, over time, this became a yard for storage. And that's part of the permit, is to legitimize that storage use this evening. I do know that further south of the project site, off of White Court, and we don't have any aerials that might show that area. There were some trucking companies at one time, and they were putting their trucks within enclosed yards behind fencing. There is a number of trucking-related uses along Petteravia Road, but again, those are, many of those were establishments that have been there for quite some time, may have been annexed many, many years ago into the city. So we don't have an inventory of where those specific locations are.
Okay. No, thank you. I was just curious as to the saturation of the trucks coming in and out in that area would be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez, any questions?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. I had a question. I don't know if this is for planning or for engineering. The applicant is requesting to remove Condition 34 of the conditions of approval, 34I and AI and BI. Does that conflict with Conditions 46 with respect to water?
Chair, Commissioner Lopez, that condition does say it requires a separate metered connection. However, it goes on to say that structures on the same property may be served by a single metered connection. So by approving or processing the lotline adjustment, the new building ends up on the existing facility site where there's already a water meter and therefore would meet the second provision of Number 46, which is being on the same site, single meter connection.
Thank you. And then my second question is, the future bay addition of 1,400 square feet on the proposed building, will they have to come back to do an amendment to the Plan Development Permit?
Chair Seifer, commissioners, Commissioner Blanco, or Lopez, excuse me. They would not need to come back for amendment for that. They are already exceeding the requirements for what they are proposing tonight. And with that addition, I think a substantial conformance letter would be necessary for that.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious because to go through another hearing is probably a little much. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dickerson?
Yeah, a couple more questions. What type of landscaping we're looking at on the east side? I mean, what type of height are we going to be dealing with? Obviously, I don't see pictures of those robust round trees from above, so it must be something different.
Chair Seifer, Commissioner Dickerson. The landscaping proposed along Kathleen Court is what you're referring to there. And I'd have to zoom in here. They are, I think, proposing hedges along that side. Kathleen Court is a private road. They do also have the screened fencing going to be on that side. They have not, at this time, proposed any larger trees along Kathleen Court.
Okay. And can you refresh my memory? Do you know what the business is on the north-hand, the northern adjacent property? I'm sorry?
Agrale Farms. And Commissioner Dickerson, if I may, am I reading this wrong? Does that say number 11 on all those trees? It's very small, because if it does, that says street trees, not...
I believe that's Chair Seifer, that's S1, which is a...
Gotcha. It's awfully small. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Can we pull up the picture of the actual fencing that's on there now, right now? We had that, it wasn't very good-looking. Okay. So my only question on this is that it seems to me that everybody that comes to us these days is going with electrified fencing. I thought we had an ordinance that barbed wire wasn't allowed. Is this a grandfathered-in clause because it's there, or how does this work?
Chair Dickerson, or, excuse me, Chair Seifer. The barbed wire is part of the request to continue to have that barbed wire on that fencing. As Greg mentioned, there were no prior discretionary permits for this site, and therefore the storage, the fencing, the barbed wire, that's all part of the request for this evening. But barbed wire is possible with the approval of the Planning Commission.
Okay, so my suggestion to them would be the same as Commissioner Blanco's about that fence. Relocation of that particular fence doesn't really look that viable. And I would suggest that they at least get new slats if nothing else. It's, it's pretty beat up. Thank you very much. I see that, Tom, you're representing the applicant. Would you like to speak tonight?
Tom Martinez, 2624 Air Park Drive, architect for the project. Really a pretty straightforward project. The only items that we had on the conditions of approval, there was a couple of semantics items regarding existing utilities being undergrounded. We were concerned with the vertige for the utilities and the undergrounding for utilities for that vacant parcel. One of the things that we've tried to do with this building, since we had to go through the PD process, is set them up for five years, 10 years down the line. Inevitably, we always have to come back for an additional bay. They don't really need it now, but, you know, my approach in directing the talent, not directing, but suggesting to the clients that we go ahead and propose a second bay is we get it approved. If we decide if they need it five, 10 years down the line, then they basically just come back for substantial completion. We don't have to go through the PD a second time. Regarding the easterly parcel, what we've actually done is I'm suggesting to them that in the future, with the growth, because they've got three different buildings on there, a couple of the buildings are very dated, and they have a lot of their driver operations inside of that one that is in the easterly corner of the current development. It's a two-story building, and in my mind, five years from now, it's probably going to, you know, need to be replaced. So my suggestion to them is, you know, let's kind of carve out the corner parcel and do a nice office building for the future. You know, and again, it's ideal for an ag use, a high-visibility corner. Yes, they're using it for storage now, but why not, you set yourself up. So we've tried to revise the basin, et cetera, to accommodate that future development. So, but not knowing what might happen with that parcel, we don't want to put utilities in there and have to be relocating them at a later date. The other thing that we're, we've done because of the current area of storage that they have there now, they're losing all of the frontage on Kathleen and on Main Street. We're also losing the ability to park in the basin. So there's about 30% of the lot that is now not usable. So they're trying to, again, gain as much use, and that's why they request for the landscaping modification. Anything that we put in terms of additional landscape just takes away storage spaces. Acknowledging that when there is a development on that eastern lot, the 15% is going to be, going to be required. Right now, any additional landscaping behind that fencing is not going to be visible. So, again, then the lot line consolidation, in addition to the utilities for the existing building, were also a function of the drainage basin that comes through. Right now, if you saw the map where the landscaping is to the north on Maldonado's parcel, that's actually a basin. Their basin drains to the west. There's also drainage that comes from the north from the agricultural area, right onto this parcel, and it cuts through the middle of the parcel following the current configuration. It was an open channel. So they've gone through and actually, with the permit late last year, or maybe it was springtime, we got, we had a plan approved and constructed to bury that, that channel. So again, that channel now follows the western.
Can you go to the landscape plan? Can you go to the landscape plan, Greg? So we can all see what Tom's talking about. Be a lot easier. Maybe the existing, maybe the, the overhead, the, the actual Googler.
Now, see, the, see, the channel's actually underneath the basin on that top edge, and then it comes straight, it's, that, okay, Frank, where you're at right now, that's actually the line of the open channel that follows to the east and then comes straight down. And what we've done is we've cut it across to the very top north because it enters that, that eastern parcel in the northwest corner. And then we've moved it so that it comes straight east, then straight down from right there. And, and covered it so that they have the ability to, to drive over it. Because in certain respects, it landlocked a lot of their parcel.
On the, on the first part of your presentation, you were talking about utilities. Is that situation remedied?
Yes, yes.
You're good on that? Okay, so you're just informing us what's been going on?
Correct.
So you're happy with the conditions of approval and the way that they're written?
Yes, we've, we've resolved all of the semantics with, with staff, public works, fire, and planning. We've got it covered.
Okay. And do we have any questions from Commissioners? I don't think we have any other additional questions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'm going to open the meeting up to the public. I don't have any written communications. Do we have anyone on Zoom that would like to speak?
Chair Seifert, currently no one intends to use Zoom.
I don't believe there's any rebuttals. Do we have any other questions from the, from the Commissioners? Seeing none, I'm going to close this public hearing, and I'm going to bring it back to the commission for a discussion and a motion. Commissioners? Commissioner Blanco?
There we are. Yeah, I, it makes sense what they're doing. I think the landscape, landscape exception in this case because of the storage goals and maybe even what they're losing in storage and the fact that it wouldn't be visible anyhow to the public makes some sense to probably approve that. A little stuck on the fencing, though. I'm a little concerned, like with Commissioner Seifert, Chair Seifert mentioned was, you know, we've been looking at a lot of fencing issues, and a lot of our applicants have been having issues with security and other things, even visibility. You know, that fence is very dilapidated. I, I, I would prefer, maybe even ask actually the applicant to, to, to do that as a replacement fencing and consider updating that. I think that will probably provide a much cleaner-looking frontage along with the landscaping. But other than that, I, I think the project makes sense for the operation that's there and what they're doing. But the fencing is definitely a little bit of a hang-up for me. I would prefer to see that be replaced and, and made a lot better. I think it's going to look like a sore thumb in, in what could be a nice landscape frontage. Thank you.
Commissioner Mohajer, please.
Thank you, Chair. I have to agree with Commissioner Blanco. I think that the fencing can really use some beautification, some replacement for sure. And, I mean, I'm all about screening these types of, you know, projects and more landscape the merrier on the perimeter, in my opinion. But I think the least we could do is replace that fence, so, thank you.
Commissioner Dickerson, please.
I will start off with the, the fencing. I agree also, I think that probably new fencing would be better. And, and as the city is trying to move away from barbed wire, then maybe there's some other, you know, some, some other solution rather than replacing the barbed wire on there. Is Chair Seifert said that a lot of the companies are going towards electrification, and maybe that's the, the direction to go. So I also, at the very least, would like to see newer fencing. I do have a hang-up on the, on the landscaping. I, I think that the, I kind of go with two, two things. The first is on the, on the east-hand side on Kathleen Court, I would rather see something that is, that does more screening of, of the trucks that are being parked there. And then as far as the, the northern section, I would like to see landscaping extended. And the basic reason is, I mean, that's just a matter of being good neighbors. If you take a look at the overhead of the, of the northern parcel, they've done landscaping. It looks nice, and they've got employees that are parking there and everything. I, I don't see there being any reason why this, this applicant can't extend their own landscaping. Now, I'm not, I'm not asking that it be screened, that it be tall enough to screen all the way, you know, across for, as we, as on Kathleen Court, but, but at least there's, you know, should be some, some landscaping there. And then I have a basic philosophy on it, and that's that, and, and we, we went over this in study session, and that was that this is a, an applicant that has a fair amount of land, and I understand that they, they want to do things with that land, but a 15% landscaping is there for a reason for the vast majority of people. And I just don't see any real reason why they can't meet that goal. They have a plenty of land, and I know they would like to put more spaces on there, but every landlord, every, every landowner would like to maximize their land, but there are requirements like landscaping. And if we, if we carved this thing back by 50%, by more than 50%, what do we say to the next guy that you bring up as a client? Well, you just look down the road. Those guys, they got 60% reduction. Why? Because they wanted to maximize their land. Eh, it's not really much of an excuse. So for me, I, I really think that increasing the land, landscaping on the northern side, extending that over, and making the landscape on the eastern side on Kathleen Court more of screening for the trucks, I think that would, I think, suffice for me. Otherwise, I have my reservations.
Commissioner Lopez?
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'm going to agree on the fence. And one thing that I was going to ask, I should have asked earlier, there's a gate on the northeast corner. Is that going to remain?
It would remain, but it's not, it's never used.
Please speak into the microphone, Tom, sorry.
The, that fence has not been used in probably five or six years. If they have a large item that they don't want to go through the front gate, they would pop that thing open. But security with their licensing pretty much dictates that everything comes out that, the current gates.
Okay.
And that, and I don't know the, regarding the, the barbed wire, they're using that as security because there's been a number of instances where some of the fertilizers have been stolen because they do have bag product. I honestly don't know if that is a requirement by the state, but I know there are certain security measures that the state requires because of the products that they have on site.
Not, I wasn't questioning the security, but the, the security measures, most people are going to electrified fences and getting rid of the barbed wire. That's, that's been pretty standard. And I think it's because they can cut the barbed wire, and with the electric fence, they cannot. So it's just food for thought. Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I'd agree on the fence, on the replacement of the fence. And I, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Dickerson on the landscape. And then the, the last thing would be, that was a great move on the lot line adjustment. That was a great move on the lot line adjustment. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I'm not as hung up on the landscaping as our Commissioners, because that is an empty lot, and it's going to remain an empty lot. There's a fence going on the north, correct, Greg?
Chair Seifert, yes.
So Commissioner Dickerson, would you be saying that you want the landscaping on the outside of the fencing? Okay, so right, so it would be, it would kind of become part of that basin then? Okay. And I believe I did hear that they, if they do come back for another permit, they will be landscaping that to the full 15%. Would it be a better idea to possibly just increase what you want on Kathleen and possibly add some more landscaping around the building itself, if possible, that people are actually going to see and, and use? Or, I mean, that, that, that particular portion might already have 15% if it wasn't counted for the rest of the.
Well, I think if you take a look at the neighbors to the north, that's, that's their parking lot. So they, they've provided landscaping for their own employees, but there's no thought being given to the employees just adjacent. They make this hard stop. So they understand the pleasantries of landscaping for their own employees for where they're parking, but they haven't given any consideration to the employees on the other side. And in point of fact, are asking us to okay that. And, and that's kind of where I'm coming from on it.
Okay. So at this time, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I move that the planning commission approve plan development permit PD 2023-0014 with the modifications that we have discussed regarding fencing. Not necessarily the barbed wire, which is, I guess, up in the air as to whether or not they are necessary or not, but that was our suggestion. But, and then the landscaping on Kathleen being brought up to a level that screens the interior of the property and the extension of landscaping on the north side as it has been already on the northwestern portion. So just an extension of that.
Commissioner Dickerson, and sorry, Chair Seifert.
And modification to 34AI, no, AI? Okay. And 34BI.
So just, I just wanted to jump in just for a couple of additional clarifications. So the presentation that Greg gave had a couple of slides that showed the, some modifications to conditions. So those were captured as part of the presentation and would be included with the approval tonight?
Yes, that's.
Then the other part of it is there is a specific condition, it's condition number three, that's related to fencing. And I, we would just like to get some clarification on what we should amend in that particular condition that's in your, in the permit. Right now, it just states any and all damaged areas on the existing chain link fence shall be replaced or repaired to new condition. All damaged or missing privacy slats shall be replaced with matching color slats, and the existing three strands of barbed wire repaired or replaced as necessary.
Was it, was it the Commissioners' desire to see new fencing?
I, I don't think the post or the fence are the issue, but I do think the slats. I don't think it would be too much to be asking for new slats. I think they can probably stretch that fence, utilize the old posts and the hangers for the barbed wire, but if they try to match what's there, it's.
It's going to look funky.
Yeah, I would just say get some new green slats.
New, new slats across the entire.
Okay, so instead of saying all damaged or missing privacy slats, it'll just say all privacy slats shall be replaced with matching color slats.
Does that work?
Seems to work.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And that's my motion.
Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Dickerson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Mohajer?
Aye.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
And Chair Seifert.
Yes, aye. I'll go with it. Tom, you're good to go. Going to have a little extra landscaping, and that, the fence is an eyesore, so.
No, I, I agree on the fence.
But, but I would suggest, just with your clients, no one's using barbed wire anymore. It's really not effective. And they are all, I mean, the new truck center and most everybody else is going to the electrified fence. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to thank you all for coming. I'm guessing you're all here for the next item. So you, you got to see what a planning commission meeting is all about. So that's good. I'm glad that you guys are second, so that you weren't first and then ran out before you saw how it all works. Maybe one of these days you'll be interested in applying and coming up here yourselves or in some way serving the city. We're all volunteers up here, so we're not like the city council. We're not, we're not elected, we are appointed. And we do this because we just love to see guys like you, people like you. So we're going to go into your project right now. It's your turn, and we're going to do the same format, and we'll see how things turn out. So thank you for being here. So at this time, we're going to go to 5B, CRR Wings Infant Center Conditional Use Permit at 2861 Air Park Drive.
Chair, I'm going to have to recuse on this item.
Commissioner Mahajer, have a good evening. I don't believe that you'll need to return for anything tonight. This is the last item, am I correct? Have a good evening.
And just to stand the record, it's because my employer may have a fiscal interest in this, so. Thank you so much.
But you can wait around if you want to hear the staff's report after this.
I'll tune in.
Channel 23 is always available, anybody wants to see this stuff live. You can actually watch this. And YouTube afterwards is correct. We're good to go. Staff, may we have a presentation, please?
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and the public. My name is Daisy Miranda, and I'm the Associate Planner with the city. And tonight I will be presenting the Children's Resource and Referral Wings Infant Child Care Center project. The 1.89 acre project site is located in the southwest portion of the city, just north and east of the airport, southwest McCoy Lane and west of Skyway Drive. The site is zoned PDM1, Plan Development Light Manufacturing, and is adjacent to office space, vacant land, and the Santa Maria Airport. To the north of the site is a two-story office building, and to the east and west of the site, there are vacant lots all within the PDM1 zone. The south side of the site is Santa Maria Public Airport District property with a narrow strip abutting the project site zone, OS, Open Space, and PDAS2, Plan Development Airport Service 2, beyond. The parcel consists of an existing two-story office building. The applicant Children's Resource and Referral of Santa Barbara County currently occupies the first and second floor as their Santa Maria office space. The site includes 98 parking spaces and exceeds landscaping requirements. In 2017, the Planning Commission approved a Plan Development Permit for the construction of two 25,600 square foot two-story office buildings on the project site and on the neighboring parcel to the northwest. The second building on the neighboring parcel to the northwest has not been built. The purpose of this project is to address the county's childcare shortage by providing a new licensed childcare facility in the city. The proposal is to establish an infant childcare center within 1,100 square feet of an existing two-story office building, including a 2,183 square foot fenced in, fenced-in outdoor playground. This use requires the approval of a conditional use permit by the Planning Commission. The Infant Childcare Center will serve a maximum of, maximum of 20 infants and toddlers ranging from zero to 24 months in age, cared for by eight direct care staff teachers. The center will welcome enrollment from families residing in Santa Maria. However, employees of Children's Resource and Referral of Santa Barbara County will be given priority. The hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. This is a project site looking southwest from Air Park Drive. It portrays the front of the project building. The proposed Infant Childcare Center will go on the first floor of the, of the southeast side of the building. The building is comprised of stucco, decorative horizontal slats, and aluminum windows. There are no proposed facade improvements to the front of the building. Here is the existing site looking west from Air Park Drive. The proposed center will occupy the bottom corner. Facade changes include a new folding panel glass door that will replace the existing windows and lead directly into the fenced-in outdoor playground. The existing site plan depicts the parcel configurations of the two existing buildings and the one approved but not yet constructed building. Sufficient parking is provided on each of the three parcels for that parcel's building. Therefore, no reciprocal parking agreement is required of this development. As previously mentioned, the project site parcel includes 98 parking spaces, which is sufficient for the existing office use and the 12 additional parking spaces required of the proposed childcare center. The proposed tenant improvements to the existing building will create a separate tenant space for the childcare center and include an open-floor classroom and toddler restroom facilities. A new folding panel glass door is proposed for the southeast side of the building, and it will lead directly into the outdoor playground. The fenced outdoor playground will replace the existing half-court basketball space and includes soft ground cover, cool artificial turf, raised garden beds, a bike loop, a stage, and outdoor seating. The six-foot wood perimeter fence will enclose the entire playground and provide a facility entrance exit on the northeast and southeast sides of the fence. The northeast door of the fence will be used as the primary door for the Infant Childcare Center. For child safety and to avoid traffic impact, parents and guardians will be instructed to park their vehicles in the tent stalls closest to the southeast side of the building, allowing for easy access to the main entrance of the center. As previously noted, only the southeast exterior of the building has proposed modifications. The top elevation shows the proposed new folding panel glass door that will replace the existing windows. The bottom elevation shows a proposed six-foot wood fence that will be stained to match the existing decorative panels on that building. With the center's proximity to the Santa Maria Airport, staff reviewed the project for conformance with airport safety zones. According to the SB CAG Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, the proposed center is Zone 2 of the airport safety zones. Daycare facilities with 14 or more children are conditionally compatible with Zone 2. The condition for compatibility is that the occupancy for the building and site is limited to 80 people per acre. This would limit the total for the project parcel to 152 people. Currently, the Children's Resource and Referral of Santa Barbara County has 46 staff members working in this building. The proposed infant center would bring the total occupancy number to 74. Based on these factors, the proposed project meets the safety compatibility criteria. Staff has determined that the project conforms to the city's general plan and zoning requirements. It will not generate significant traffic, noise, air quality, noise, air quality, or water quality impacts, and can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services. Therefore, this project qualifies as a Class 1 Existing Facilities Cataclysmal Exemption based on Section 15301 of the California Environmental Quality Act Guidelines, and no further environmental review is required. At this moment, staff recommends that the Planning Commission, by motion, approve Conditional Use Permit U 2024-0008. This concludes my presentation of the Infant Child, Childcare Center. Thank you for your time, and I'm available for questions. Additionally, the applicant, Ms. Bonta, is also in attendance and available to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any expertise on this? No. Do we have any questions for staff? Commissioner Dickerson?
Can we go back to the slide that showed the, it was just one or two back from this? No. It's, it's the overhead that showed the air, the airstrip and where the building is. There you go. So the, the safety compatibility criteria, I guess the question I, I have is, have any noise studies been done or did noise studies get done? I know that, and by, by all means, I, I would defer to the Children's Resource Center of Santa Barbara and everything. But, you know, the younger the child, the more susceptible they are to things as they are growing up that affect them later on in life. I just want, is curious whether or not having a, an airport airstrip right next door, or relatively so, is, is an issue at all.
Chair, Commissioner Dickerson. The Airport Compatibility Plan, there's two components. One is the safety overflight zones, and the second is actually noise contours. And this site is outside of the noise contour limit where restrictions might start. So in other words, the noise from the airport is not such that the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan would place any restrictions on any types of uses within this project site.
Okay. And, but I mean, as far as decibel levels and whatnot, I mean, are we, are they relatively low or within, within our norms or, or are they jacked up?
No, the decibel levels as estimated in the SB CAG Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan, the boundary line, I believe, is 64 decibels, which is approximately like one of our collector streets.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners? Questions? No questions? Can you go back to that last slide? How do I read that, that legend? Safety Zone 1, is that safe? Or is that the most, most dangerous?
It's most restrictive, starting with 1, and it becomes less restrictive as you go through the numbers.
So what does 6 mean?
6 is the very least. It's essentially the airport influence boundary, I believe, is the terminology that's used. It's somewhat.
Well, it's in, it's, it's in 6 and 2. If I'm, that's why I was asking. Because it's all, it's all in the red, so I, I didn't quite understand the legend.
Correct. The 6 is the least restrictive. And again, I believe that that just indicates it's within the airport land use boundaries.
And as far as noise, I always looked up at every airplane that went by. So I, I don't have a big, I don't have a big pose to that. I love airplanes, still do. Air show's this weekend, by the way. I didn't say that. So let's keep going. We've got the questions. Everybody's done with your questions? Cool. Okay. Do you guys have a presentation? No, you're good to go? Okay, come on up and just state your name and address for the record, and we'll hear it. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for having us. My name's Jackie Banta. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Children's Resource and Referral. And Michelle Lee Graham is in the audience, who is our CEO for Children's Resource and Referral. And our wonderful team is all here supporting this work. We think it's really important to mention, we've been working with the cities all year long, actually, as part of some ARPA work, working on land use reports. And we just published a land use report for the county. Thank you for anyone who participated in that. The importance of high-quality early learning opportunities for young children cannot be overstated. Research has consistently shown that providing enriching educational experiences for children from birth to age 5 has a profound and lasting impact on their development and future success. We often say, what you provide them when they're four impacts them when they're 40. When children have access to stimulating, nurturing, and structured pre-kindergarten programs, they are far more likely to enter kindergarten with skills, knowledge, and social-emotional maturity needed to thrive in a classroom setting. The benefits of early learning extend far beyond just the children themselves. It also provides an invaluable service to the parents and the caregivers. Knowing that their little ones are in a safe, enriching environment allows working families to go about their daily lives with the peace of mind and confidence that their children are being well cared for. This not only reduces parental stress and anxiety, but it also enables them to be more productive and focused at their jobs, strengthening the entire family's financial and emotional well-being. In short, high-quality early learning is a true gift that keeps on giving, setting children up for lifelong success while simultaneously supporting the needs of working parents and caregivers. It is a wise investment in the future of both individual children and our society as a whole. Wings Infant Center, an extension of our already existing Wings Preschool in Santa Maria as well, will provide working families with safe, nurturing, high-quality care for their infants. Did you know that for every 10 infants born in our county, we only have one licensed space for them? Wings Infant Center will help address that deficit, serving our littlest people with the most thoughtful hands. Thank you so much for your consideration and time.
Hang on, do we have questions? So how do people pay for this? Is it, did you have a question, Commissioner? So how, how's it paid for? How, how do, how do people get signed up for this? What, what kind of program is it?
We do accept alternative payment programming. It is a private preschool or childcare center. So we will accept alternative payment programs such as subsidies through our county Office of Education or through Resource and Referral Alternative Payment Program. Families qualify by being low-income, at-risk, or foster, and that program reimburses the childcare facility based off of the use of time that the child is there. In addition to that, we will accept private pay parties, and scholarships will be offered for those who may be able to pay in advance of care. That means on the first of each month, they pay prior to receiving care, because when you are a childcare center that receives subsidies, you are paid in reimbursement, so a month late. So there are scholarships available for private pay families, and we also accept all-state subsidies.
Thank you. That's it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open the meeting up to the public. I have no slips up here. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
Chair Seabird, currently no one in attendance on Zoom.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to close the public meeting, and I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Well, actually, is that right? Not quite. You guys didn't have any questions? Okay, then the, the hearing is closed, and I'm going to bring it back to the commission for a discussion and a motion. Commissioners? Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No, I, I think these are excellent projects. It's greatly needed. I had a toddler three years ago. And so the, to find a, a place that you can take a child to and, and learn, and it's, it's very important. Greatly needed in our community. I'd be in support of this project. Thank you.
Commissioner Blanco?
I'll state something similar, yeah. I think this is a critical, vital need for our community. You know, we've had some projects in the past come forward and get approved and then don't happen, and so that's kind of sad. Happy to hear that hopefully this does move forward. Much, much needed. You know, we're trying to attract more young professional families to the community, and this is one important service that they'll need, so I fully support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Yeah. I also will be supporting this. I think it's a tremendous need. I'm glad you guys are doing it. I, the only complaint I have is that I wish you guys had more square footage you could have built. I mean, I, you know, 20, 20 people or 20 children, it's going to be gone before it's even built. I mean, it's just gone. So I, I commend you guys. I look forward to seeing it. I can make a motion or, Chair, would you like to have?
I'm going to add. Now you made me forget what I was going to add. So what I like about this project, I think Commissioner Blanco was the one that said we've had these projects come before us before and fail. I think that you're doing it in a reasonable way. The doors are expensive that you're putting in. Fencing is not what it used to be. It's expensive, but it's not that bad. So you're basically building a playground, and you're going to do some minor modifications on the inside, which I think you can afford, which is excellent, because we've had some people come in with some major modifications, and that's what didn't get built. So I think you're on the right path here with your business plan and what you're doing. And I have absolutely no exceptions to it, and I can totally support this project. So at this time, I'm going to call for a motion.
All right.
Commissioner Dickerson?
Certainly. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission, by motion, approve the Conditional Use Permit U 2024-0008 with no modifications.
Nice. Do we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
And can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Dickerson?
Absolutely.
Commissioner Blanco?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chair Sefer?
Aye. That's it. I hope somebody's taping this. We don't get this often. Thank you.
Is that your mic? I thought we were here. Ask this. Call.
No, we, actually, my biggest pet peeve about this job is that no one shows up that should show up, and it's, 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 they don't take the time to come and.
Suzanne and Nancy.
I'm not talking about the left side, okay?
Those guys are fans. They, they show up all the time.
And Ethel, it's so nice to see you back. So, so nice to see you. But for the, for the most part, we're here kind of very, a few attendees. So, no, we really appreciate you guys being here. Thanks for looking how the, seeing how the system works. Please, you know, volunteer, be a part of it, come back. The, the community needs your help, and thank you for what you do. So, your projects are good.
See, this, this is, this is working now, so.
Yeah, that's true.
This is, it's time for number six, other business, oral reports from planning commissioner and staff. Do we have any reports from staff?
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. I just wanted to give you an update on an item that was approved by the city council yesterday evening. The sales and disposition agreement between the City of Santa Maria and Vernon Construction for the downtown revitalization project was adopted by the city council, and so now they will be moving forward with applications for the remaining developments on lots 1 through 4 of that plan. So those will be coming to your Commission next. And then the only other update I was gonna mention is tomorrow, there is a study session at 1:30 p.m. in Shepherd Hall. We do have two items on the agenda tomorrow, so we'll do our best to end by three. It could go a little later than three, but we're gonna try to keep the presentations brief so that you have a time to ask questions and give us your feedback. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
And just to add to that, anyone that doesn't have the time to, or misses a city council meeting, 12:40 a.m., 12:40 radio station, you know, old, old people know that there's an AM station, actually even a radio station, I guess now with streaming and everything, but there, there's a thing on, that's called a radio. It's AM 12:40, and Ben goes through, this morning, he was with Commissioner, Council Person Soto. They discussed all the, the, the agenda last night and the outcome. So it's an easy way to get kind of a quick crib note type thing, cliff note, actually. So thank you for that update. Do we have anything from the Commissioners? Oh, I gotta get out there. This meeting's adjourned.[1629.58]